We have two items on today's agenda. I believe that we need to have
Mr. Chair, I move to approve today's agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on today's agenda?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
The Governor requests, and assess the public On May 26, 2020, the Board of County Commissioners passed Resolution Number 15896, approving the request for variants and directed Director of Public Health and Social Services to submit that request as soon as feasible. On the same day, on May 26, the Director of Public Health, Shelley Slaughter, submitted that application to the State Department of Health for their consideration. Less than 24 hours, and on May 27, 2020, the State Department of Health authorized Thurston County moving to Phase 2 of their Governor's Safe Start Plan. On May 29, 2020, the Governor announced the expansion of the Safe Start Plan and ending this state home, state health order, which was on Sunday, May 31, 2020, and allowing counties already in Phase 2 to move and apply into Phase 3 with a minimum of three-week period under Phase 2. As a result, Thurston County is eligible to submit a request to move into Phase 2 of the Governor's Safe Start Plan today, June 17, 2020. The Thurston County Acting Health Officer, Dr. Diana Yu, has reviewed the guidance of Phase 3 of the State Department of Health request, assessed the public health responses within Thurston County, and has submitted a letter to the Board of Health, to all of you, dated today, June 17, 2020. That letter is attached to your pocket of this morning's meeting. In this letter, Dr. Yu recommends Thurston County Board of Health to request a variance to allow Thurston County to implement all Phase 3 modifications of the Governor's Safe Start Plan. For your consideration today is for you to affirm Dr. Diana Yu's letter, and also for you to consider sending this recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. Any questions?
No, I don't have any.
I don't have any questions, no.
Okay, I do not either.
I believe Dr. Yu would like to follow up with additional information.
Okay, great, Dr. Yu.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's not additional information, but just a little bit of an explanation. I am recommending that we go ahead and apply to move into Phase 3 of the Safe Start Program, of the State's, excuse me, Safe Start reopening plan. I believe we can safely do that, in terms of the public health capacity in our medical community's capacity to handle a COVID outbreak. We are able to do that. I don't have any doubts that we can handle more. Coincidentally, on the first day that we were eligible to move into Phase 2, we had a large outbreak in a long-term care
joining the conference.
And we were able to handle that and continue to handle that. The one concern that I have is something that is out of our control, and that is the ability of our citizens to follow the protective measures that we have outlined for them. We continue, we will continue and continue to make those recommendations and find different ways, if citizens have ideas on how they can help each other, be more in compliance with prevention measures, I think that would really help us. We're going to have to live with COVID-19 for a while. And we will move forward. The public health system and the medical care system will continue to respond. But if we can prevent the cases from happening, that would be the best way to live with COVID. And it's just, I almost wanted to play the music "Staying Away." But it's staying away. And I guess that would be the same thing, but, you know, and just not touching our face, washing our hands, and wearing the face covering when you end up having to be near somebody. It's just, it's just, it's just the right thing to do. So I feel very confident that we are able to meet that the Secretary of Health and the Department of Health has put out. And I recommend that we go ahead and submit the application, and good luck to us.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Yu?
No questions, but I have a comment on her letter.
Yes, please.
With the increase of mobility and relaxing of some social distancing, I'm encouraged by your letter that in part says, "I believe we can safely enter Phase 3." And then the last line, "We will need the full cooperation of our citizens with taking preventative measures so that we can successfully implement our community's recovery plan." And that can't be overstated.
Has left the conference.
Okay, goodbye. So that can't be overstated, Doc, and I greatly appreciate it, and I just am very hopeful that our community and our citizens will take you seriously and continue on telecommuting, covering their face, and all the other recommendations. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. I had also highlighted the exact same sentence in the letter as I read it, so I'm glad you restated it. So with no further questions for Dr. Yu, is it, can I hear a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution H-06-2020 to affirm, I'm sorry, affirm the recommendation of the Thurston County Health Officer to apply for a variance to move into Phase 3 of Governor Inslee's Safe Start Plan.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this item?
No.
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that motion carries 3-0. We have the attached resolution. Ramiro, that's sufficient. We don't need to read that?
No, what I'll do is, after this meeting, I'll start circulating for your formal action on that, signing the resolution.
Okay, very good. Our second item today is appointment of Thurston County Health Officer. And again, Shelley is listed as our point person, so I'm going to turn it to Shelley.
Thank you, Commissioner Menzer. It's my great pleasure to present to you Dr. Demiana Abdam Malik for your consideration to appoint as Thurston County's local health officer effective July 1. As the Board reported last month at a meeting that you convened, Dr. Abdam Malik was selected as the top candidate after several months of robust recruitment that was in national search. Dr. Abdam Malik comes to us from the state of California and is planning a relocation here next week. We're very excited. We have had acting and interim health officers since December 1 of 2019. And it is the Board of Health's responsibility to appoint a health officer according to RCW 70.05.040. And that local health officer must meet all the requirements as stated in RCW 75.05.050. And Dr. Abdam Malik meets all of those requirements and more. Very excited to present her to you for consideration, and also want to extend our great thanks to the Washington State Health Officers that have provided coverage to us during this search, to include Dr. Alan Melnick, Dr. Chris Spitters, Dr. Massinarita, Dr. Kathy Lofe, Dr. Dan Stein, and of course, our wonderful Dr. Diana Yu. These appointments
Has left the conference.
Of these interim health officers will expire on July 1 with your appointment of our new permanent health officer, Dr. Demiana Abdam Malik, if you so choose to appoint her today. And I'm happy that she's joined us on this call and provide a little bit more about herself and give her a chance to share information with you.
Dr. Abdam Malik, I'll ask you to unmute yourself and just introduce yourself briefly. We may have citizens watching who haven't got to meet you yet.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Board of Health. I'm really excited to be joining Thurston County at this kind of momentous state in both our, you know, our state's and our nation's history. I'm excited to take on the challenges of COVID-19 and help keep Thurston County safe and healthy, in addition to collaborating with all of the other really essential work of the Public Health Department. And I look forward to meeting everybody in our community and continuing to work closely with you all. Thanks.
Commissioners, anything for Dr. Abdam Malik, just by way of introductory?
I don't want to make an introductory statement. I just want to welcome her aboard in trying times.
Ditto, Doctor. Can't wait. And I'm happy to hear that you're moving in, what, next, moving up next week?
Yes, I move in the 24th, so I'll be pretty local.
So the first step is getting hired, next step is getting estate, and then start working. Can't wait. Nice to have you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Well, I welcome you as well, Ramiro.
Yeah, just a comment. Doctor, welcome aboard. Welcome to Thurston County organization. I believe you will find Thurston County to be a very rewarding organization to work for. And it couldn't be any better time for you to join during those conditions. So I think the challenge is ahead of us, and we trust that you will guide us through to the best of your abilities to protect our community, as Dr. Yu has done it in the last couple of months.
Thank you.
Today, I have one last thing, Chair.
Absolutely. Good job, Hutchings.
I'm sorry, Doctor, I was talking over Dr. Abdam Malik.
I just wanted to say thank you to all of you, and I'm really excited to get started. And thank you to Dr. Diana Yu. I look forward to to learning about how our response has progressed so far and continuing on all of the amazing work.
All right. Your video is out of sync with your audio, so it's, we're not, we apologize.
And Doctor, I just want, Dr. Yu, I just wanted to say you have to be more excited than I am with Dr. Abdam Malik coming up, because you get to move on.
I do. I'm very appreciative, actually, of the time that I've spent. You know, we have an excellent public health department, excellent staff, excellent leadership. I think that, you know, it has served us well. There are always going to be people that are naysayers or complainers. We're not doing enough. We're not doing, we're not doing, we're doing too much. But the bottom line is our dedication to protecting the community. And we've done, we've done the best that we can, and we're doing a very good job. So it, welcome you with open arms. I'll be dancing out the door.
Dancing the other way.
It's, and not only that, Thurston County is a wonderful place to live. Lived here for 30 years and plan to, you know, retire here and stay on. So, you know, but we will have some time to chat after you arrive and get to kind of show you where everything's at, and then you can deal with the changes with COVID-19.
Thank you, Dr. Yu. I really, I look forward to that.
Okay, with that, is there a motion?
Yes, sir. I move to approve Dr. Demiana Abdam Malik.
A point, Commissioner?
What did I say, approve?
Yeah. Sorry.
I move to appoint Dr. Demiana Abdam Malik as the Thurston County Health Officer.
Second.
And I approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion about this motion?
No, sir.
Shelley.
I just want to ask that you consider revising that motion to say effective July 1.
I would.
Dr. Yu, did you have something with respect, okay. Commissioner Hutchings made the motion. Is that an acceptable amendment?
That's a very acceptable amendment. Move to appoint Dr. Demiana Abdam Malik as the Thurston County Health Officer effective July 1, 2020.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. We have, the motion then on the floor is move to approve Dr. Demiana Abdam Malik as a health officer as of July 1. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Congratulations, Doctor. We look forward to seeing you July 1 or sooner, if you're here and able to come to visit with us. And that, I believe, is our final item on the agenda. Is there any final items from the Board of Health Commissioners? Go to the order or otherwise?
Definitely.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Edward Fox.
And
You're on, Commissioner.
All right, good morning, and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners' special meeting for June 17, 2020, requesting a variance anyway from Phase 2 to Phase 3 in the Governor's Safe Start. I am John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board, and we also have Vice Chair Commissioner Ty Mensah and Commissioner Gary Edwards in the House. And we have the County Manager Ramiro Chavez, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, PHSS, or Public Health and Social Services Director Shelley Slaughter, and the County's interim health officer, Dr. Diana Yu. And Ramiro, I don't see anybody else on the line or on the call.
I see Thomas Sinder Cooper join us on this Zoom meeting.
Okay. And if you would like to listen in on the telephone, the phone number is 360-252-9020, and your PIN number is 1284. And we have one item on the agenda, and it's a resolution to adopt Thurston County Board of Health's resolution that was just adopted moments ago, requesting for a variance for Thurston County to move into Phase 3 of the Governor's Safe Start Plan. And so I'm going to turn to, I'll start with Ramiro, who will kick it down the road.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners. As a matter of clarification, this is not a special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners.
Or it's not.
This is a regular meeting, and that is a fundamental difference on how the agenda is put in place. So it's just a matter of clarification.
Good, thank you. I scratched my handwriting out. Thank you.
Commissioners, for the view in public, let me give you the background in terms of this particular legislation before you. This is for you to consider approving, adopting the Thurston County Board of Health Resolution Number H-06-2020. On February 29, 2020, the Governor of the State of Washington issued a proclamation 20-05 proclaiming the state of emergency on all counties throughout the state of Washington due to the coronavirus COVID-19. On March 23, 2020, the Governor extended the state of emergency and established the state of home, state healthy order effective until April 6, 2020. On April 2, 2020, the Governor announced a month-long extension of the state home, state healthy order through May 4, 2020. On May 1, 2020, the Governor announced the extension of the state home order until May 31, 2020, and provided the Safe Start Washington, which is a four-faced approach as to how the economy and businesses can start reopening in Washington State. On May 19, the Governor outlined circumstances in which counties they're currently under Phase 1, they can probably submit an application moving into Phase 2, having one of the main criterias, obtain new cases for 100,000 residents in the last 14 days. Thurston County met that criteria, and at that time, their interim health officer, Dr. Diana Yu, reviewed the guidelines of the Governor's request on their Phase 2 and submitted a letter on May 22, 2020 to Board of Health, recommending movement to Thurston County from Phase 1 to Phase 2. On May 22, the Board of Health passed Resolution Number H-05-2020 concurrent with Dr. Yu's recommendation and requesting a variance to move into Phase 2, and also encouraging the Board of County Commissioners to do the same. On May 26, 2020, the Board of County Commissioners passed Resolution Number 15896, approving the request of a variance and directed the Director of Public Health to submit an application approving the request of a variance and directing the Director of Public Health to submit an application to the state as soon as feasible. On the same day, May 26, 2020, Shelley Slaughter, Director of Public Health and Social Services, submitted that application to the State Department of Health requesting the variance. And on May 27, the State Department of Health gave the green light to Thurston County to move into the Phase 2 of the Governor's Safe Start Plan. Under those under those circumstances, Phase 2, where Thurston County is currently is currently under those conditions, includes restrictions affecting businesses and permits opening on the following criteria: remaining manufacturing, construction phase from Phase 1, restaurants and taverns with less than 50% capacity, table size no longer than five people, no bar seating allowed, hair and nail salons were open, retail and store purchasing purchases allowed with restrictions, real estate professional services, office-based businesses, although also open, but although strongly encouraging telecommuting. In-home domestic services also open under Phase 2, such as nannies, house cleaning, pet grooming, and essential travel, and limited non-essential travel is still in place under Phase 2. On May 29, 2020, the Governor announced the extension of the Safe Start Plan and ending the State Home Stay Healthy Order, which was on May 31, 2020, and allowing counties already under Phase 2, such as Thurston County, to request moving into Phase 3 with a minimum of three weeks in Phase 2. Under those conditions, Thurston County is eligible to submit an application to the State Department of Health on June 17, 2020. That is today. Phase 3 expands the modifications affecting the businesses and also provides additional conditions under Phase 2, which allows gathering gatherings with no more than 50 people, restaurants and taverns with less than 75% capacity, table size no more than 10 people, bar seating with less than 25% capacity, now movie theaters with 50% capacity, customer-facing government services, which is, in this case, Thurston County Government and other governments, although they're encouraging to open, and telecommuting is also strongly encouraged, libraries, museums, and all other activities except for nightclubs and e and events that have 50 people or more. That is some of the main criteria under Phase 3. There is a lot more detail on the on the state's website for other activities that may be allowed on their Phase 3. The variance process to move from Phase 2 to Phase 3 starts with the local public health officers submitting assigned recommendations to the local Board of Health with one of the following recommendations: request a variance to implement all Phase 3 modifications, or request a variance to implement subset of Phase 3 modifications. No further modifications will be allowed under the Governor's requirements. The county's variance request must include specific information documented that the county four capabilities, record readiness, testing capacity, and ability for case in contact investigations, and ability to protect a high-risk population. The interim Thurston County Health Officer, Dr. Diana Yu, has reviewed the guidance of the Governor's requires on their Phase 3, assessed the public health response within Thurston County, and has submitted a signed letter dated June 17, 2020, recommended the Board of Health to request a variance and allow Thurston County to implement all places with no modifications of Phase 3. The the attached letter was submitted to the Board of Health, and on June 17, 2020, just almost 40 minutes ago, the Board of Health convened and adopted a Resolution Number H 6 2020, approving a variance request to implement all Phase 3 modifications of the Governor's Safe Start Plan, and requesting that the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners approve the Board of Health's variance request. The Board of County Commissioners must vote on the local Board of Health's plan to apply fully or partially to implement Phase 3 measures. The Board of County Commissioners cannot alter the health with the Board of Health's proposal. So before you is for you to consider adopting the Resolution of the Board of Health Number H 06 2020, and also for you to direct the Director of Public Health and Social Services to submit an application for to the State Department of Health, and particularly to the Secretary of Health, Dr. John Weisman. As soon as feasible or as soon as this resolution is considered final or final by the Board. That's all I have for you as a matter of background, and I believe that Dr. Diana Yu is here, Shelley, to answer any questions, if you have any.
After you.
I I actually had just a point of clarification. When we're talking about Phase 3, especially with businesses in allowing more occupancy, restaurants, and gyms, et cetera, that is still when we talk about less than 75% of capacity includes having measures that allow for the physical distancing of six feet between people. So if you have a small facility that 75% of capacity may may not be attainable, because you need to still keep people at six feet of distance, except for when they're seated together, you know, at a table, but your tables have to be apart. So and the same with with gyms and and even outdoors when you have 50 people, you have to have 50 people that are at least six feet apart, unless they're household or family members. But that's just a reminder.
Thank you. Shelley Slaughter, Director, do you have anything to say?
I don't have anything to add at this time, sir, but happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Okay, any any questions for Shelley Slaughter?
No, sir.
Okay. So is there a motion?
I move to approve a resolution adopting the Thurston County Board of Health's Resolution Number H 06 2020, requesting a variance to implement Phase 3 modification of the Governor's Safe Start Plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Resolution adopting the Thurston County Board of Health's Resolution Number H dash G 06 dash 2020, requesting a variance to implement Phase 3 modifications of the Governor's Safe Start Plan. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Any comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Mensah.
Just a comment. I mean, I I I've heard, you know, there's a lot of enthusiasm for, you know, trying to get our businesses reopened. There's also a lot of community concern about what the effects might be. There's been mixed results in other parts of the country as reopenings happen. We're following the parameters of our state's carefully thought-through reopening plan, so we have the capacity in place and we have the blessing of our health officers. So that's why I'm comfortable with this action. But, you know, as Dr. Yu said in our earlier Board of Health meeting, and Commissioner Hutchings reaffirmed also that, you know, we've got to have good community participation compliance with our protective measures. Last night, I was watching some footage from the Capitol Hill Autonomous Zone in Seattle, and I don't not sure about physical distancing, but they were they were walking all through the area, and it was probably 90% of people masked up, which I found to be encouraging. A much higher percentage than what I see if I go to Target on the West Side of Olympia. So we really have to we really have to understand that one piece of our lives is reopening and changing.
It's now joining the conference.
Of our lives is exactly the same as it's been the last three months, which is to be very careful about all the protective measures that are that have been laid out, and that's going to that's what what's going to help us be successful. And so I'm asking the community to to, you know, work together on that, and we can do this successfully.
Thank you. I have a question of Shelley or Dr. Yu, and that is when we moved when Thurston County moved from Phase 1 to Phase 2, we were told of our approval at just about 24 hours later. It was pretty quick. But now being the 17th, there are numerous counties that are applying for a variance today, and I'm told that will take considerably more time. Is that like by the end of the week? Or do we have? I know we can't guarantee that, but it's going to take a few days, I would imagine.
That's correct, sir. The Department of Health has told all local health jurisdictions not to expect 24-hour turnaround for Phase 3 applications. It's a more in-depth application. There are more counties eligible to apply, and my hope is that by end of the week, we will hear a response from the Department of Health.
Thank you for that clarification, because I just want to be clear that to the public that the Board of Health approving an application for a variance does not mean we're there. The Board of County Commissioners affirming the Board of Health's action does not mean we are there. This is an application to move into the next phase, and we must wait for approval from the Department of Health and the Governor to approve us. Commissioner Mensah?
Just wanted to clarify that the mask directive that we had stays in place as we move even assuming we're approved for Phase 3, that same directives regarding wearing masks in public remains, correct?
Yes.
Whoops, you you muted back out.
All right. Yes, it does. That directive, in my mind, and I'm hoping that Dr. Abdul Malik will continue that because it is a, you know, a health officer directive, but she would need to reaffirm it when she comes on board. But that should be in place until the threat of COVID-19 is no longer here. That said, there are there are there's a lot of confusion because in the workplace, the masking directive is is mandated by the Governor. And so that is it that has more stringent requirements for the workplace. So if you are an employee, in addition to what I have said, there there may be stricter requirements for you regarding masking at work. And and, you know, concerns about that need to be addressed, and and I I appreciate what you said, Commissioner Mensah. Really, it it is it is in everybody's best interest for us to mask and keep our distance. And, you know, the farther we are away, the better it is for keeping the the disease at bay.
So as I said, do you have anything more, Commissioner Mensah? Okay. Commissioner Edwards, anything?
No. If I had anything to push, I would like to know for the public's sake, what would be the next phase somewhere down the road? Do we have that criteria yet?
The Phase 4 criteria has not been released yet, but if you look at Phase 4, it is essentially return to normal activities with no restrictions. And unlike Phases 1 through 3, in which there was a minimum of three weeks allowed before you could move to the next phase, that is not the case with Phase 4. We don't expect to be able to move into Phase 4 until there is a treatment or vaccine for COVID-19. There may be other other guidance developed between Phases 3 and 4, but at this time, we do not expect to be ready to move into Phase 4 for the for the near future.
Thank you.
Now, good question, Commissioner. Thank you for that. Good information. And as I said at the Board of Health meeting, that with an increase of mobility, if we are allowed and approved for this variance, the increase in mobility and what I've already seen as the relaxing of the distancing, social distancing causes me concern. And you aptly stated that in your letter, Doc, that we must continue our six-foot separation or more. And as I have also said before, this is my very first pandemic, and I want to get it right. And I believe we can get it right. We've successfully so far gotten through Phases 1 and 2, and hopefully into Phase 3, and challenges are what make life interesting, but overcoming them is what makes life very meaningful. And we will eventually get back to normal, whenever that is. So I thank you for your guidance and your work, Shelley and Dr. Diana Yu, throughout this pandemic and the continued work. So with that, is there a motion? Oh, we already have the motion. So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Nope. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. And is there anything else for the good of the order?
I will be circulating this resolution for you to sign here in the next few minutes, and and those will be documents that needs to be submitted on the application. Shelley has worked, I believe, overnight just to make sure that we have that application ready to be submitted today. So I believe all that required with your action, all that required information is is there. And and I'd like to also extend my deepest appreciation to Dr. Yu and also Shelley and her staff to make sure the application is correct, the application is 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 reviewable, because it's very complex. I just started reading that application before this meeting, and requires a lot of work. I just don't want to pass by that it's not a simple one-page application. It's a very complex application. There is a lot of information that needs to be put in place. And and I believe Shelley, her staff, and Dr. Yu have done an outstanding job to get us where we are today.
Yeah.
And you've been working on that application for quite some time already. That's what gets us to this at this point, and I I truly applaud all your staff, Shelley, at PHSS, because they're doing all the same extended additional work in addition to their normal duties as well, which is very top very trying for folks. So thank you.
Without hazard pay.
What's that?
It said without hazard pay.
That's right. All right. So thank you very much, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.